All right, we'll call this meeting to order, a special work session.
Need me to do that?
I can do it. Mayor, here.
Do you remember them all?
Paul Miller, here.
Here.
Councilperson Dean, here. Tony.
Yeah.
And Nick, here. All right, let's, so before this is a, I don't know, funding proposals for three pretty major projects.
Kind of let Maggie give her recommendations, but I guess whatever makes sense to you. First page in future projects, I also put along here, that's easier for you to decipher. But at least with Maggie's proposed plan, she kind of talked about why there's certain recommendations. We've got the lagoon under being paid for by sewer, Woxie Creek widening, it's an internal slash grant slash a mix of other buckets of money. For when you were roundabout, we've got a fully by TIF. I asked Kevin Olson today if it was possible, if we're going to be the ones, it was Roger's question, if we're going to be the ones maintaining the Johnson County side, can they just deed that road over to us so we can TIF for the entire project? Because as it currently stands, we can't TIF on the Johnson County side. So there's an option of paying through it through TIF if we go through Johnson County, but there's some legal hoops to go through. If we go that route, we've got East Side Water Main Phase One, that would be GO debt. In the next couple of years, we have East Side Phase Two, that'll be out of SRF and water fees. There's more requirements with SRF, but the interest rate is way lower. That's why it's recommended for the second phase, because it's going to take time for Dave, myself, and Maggie to work with some of the Davis Bacon rules in America, build America first, you gotta do American supplies, so it takes longer to go the SRF route, but it does save us a lot of money. If Main Street does become an issue in the next couple of years, I've got that under the new GO debt. We would have some debt capacity left over if we don't do both East Side phases all at once. I'll let Dave maybe explain a little bit. We have some filter, water tower filter issues. If engineers can't repair them to replace one, they're $250,000. So I don't know, they're trying to repair it, but just now that could be a surprise cost. So I threw that in here. Cedar Johnson, we have expiring GO debt around fiscal year 27. So we just roll over that, that part of our tax levy into a new project. Rec projects at the very bottom, I threw that in here, just as a question for Maggie, because the best way, I guess, to pay for possible rec projects, probably through TIF. It'll be harder to get those to pass, so, and I know that's your bottom of the totem pole in terms of this council's priorities, but I thought I would throw that in there. If we ever need anything for Heritage Square, Parkside, I did ask Pete Swisher to reapply for trail funding, it takes five years. So we're not going to see that anytime, anytime soon, most likely. Or just park improvements in general. So I just threw that down at the, at least the bottom of the list. I don't know if that's easier for you to understand, but in the first page, it does kind of tell you what project, when it'll be bid out, how it's being paid for. So you got Uber, you've got the roundabout, you've got water mains, and you've got Woxie Creek. Let's talk about future projects, concerns, suggestions, I'll let Maggie kind of cover that. This is our constitutional debt authority that we have. Assuming we take out this much, the $2 million, 2.3 million, we would have roughly $4 million to work with. That's going to be up to your guys' decision, if you want to take more out for East Main's, or you want to leave extra money left over in case Main Street happens, or Cedar Johnson. And then the following page basically breaks down, why I say it breaks down, what matters the most to you as council members is the very right column. Basically, it's telling you how much, here to take out 2.3 million in property taxes, you subtract all the tip we're using, all the sewer water would be costing, right now, in the proposal, about $45 a year per home. So I know we've talked up to 100, it could be. So as of right now, with all the tip we're using, we are under that quite a bit.
I took the current tax rate?
Correct, so the, the green would be the, the tax rate, so it would be about just under a dollar would be the tax rate increase. What the person or the homeowner would pay is on the right, so which, whichever makes the most sense to you, green and purple's going to make the most sense to you guys. Another stuff is just revenue debt, if we do water, the rest is just payment schedules.
So is that $45 a month or a year?
Annually for $100,000. For $100,000. Most homes would be double or triple that.
Thank you, Maggie. What I just broke down a little bit was, just some of the projects, future projects, how they're paid for, the kind of what you had in the first page, I just did it in different format, if that makes sense.
Just fine, absolutely, I apologize, everybody.
No.
You're scrambling from meeting to meeting today? A little bit. What is the capacity remaining that we want to see?
Let's talk about that, page two. Thank you, everyone, I'm Maggie Berger, who's here. On page two, the gassy that we're looking at, I did update column number two, like we just started July 1st. So you did grow significantly by 5.5%, and this is overall 100% value. This is not tax value, unfortunately, you know, you don't have control over the rollback, residential rollback of other things, but we did see a significant growth in 100% value, which does help with our debt capacity. So at $268 million of value, we have $13,413,000 of debt capacity. Right now, outstanding, you have $4,959,000 of general obligated type of debt, and that's principal only, that we must count against the debt capacity. You have about $77,000 of annually appropriated rebate agreements, I'm not as concerned about that, small number. By the end of the fiscal year, so by next June 1st, you will pay $884,000 of debt off. You will make payments, GO payments of that amount. This will, and then if we were to issue general obligation bonds of $2,375, and we'll have that conversation, you may have already had that conversation, but if we were to issue approximately $2,375, you would have remaining debt capacity of about $6,963,000. That's about 51%. Our goal is never to let you issue more than 80% of your debt capacity. If you'll recall, when you did your park project, we tipped right over the scale at 80%. You had a much lower capacity number at the time, it was a very large bond issue for the city, and we kind of tiptoed over that number, knowing that within about a year, we were going to be gaining valuation and getting back under that 80%. So I would like to say that in, in the years since that park project, you have grown significantly, that even after the 80% drop off, the 20% contingency reserve of about 2.6, that blue number there at the bottom, 4.2 million, is what you would have in remaining capacity if you were to issue about $2.3 million in bonds this year. To answer your question, or? We, yeah.
So that's rainy day money, if we need it for some other?
Right, right, I would say rainy day money or other CIP projects that he's got coming up. You are also significantly paying off debt, with this, with this scenario in these, in columns three, four, five, and six, do not include is the debt repayment of $2,375. So where you see in the middle where it says bonds paid during the fiscal year, in that first line, we have 869, 884, 820, 845. If we were to issue $2,375, there is going to be more debt coming off on an annual basis. So you're going to be somewhere between probably $900 to $1 million, $900,000 to $1 million every year, and that's of significance. The, the sooner you pay debt off, the faster you grow that debt capacity, because you're making more significant principal payments on an annual basis. We are noting that, you know, on a $2.3 million schedule, you're probably somewhere between 120 on the low end, to maybe $200,000 of debt repayment annually on the high end. So that would just bulk up. You do notice in column number five, it drops off your debt payments, and that's really because by the, by the time we get to that year, you have significant debt dropping off. We have one tranche of your park project debt dropping off at that point in time, in that fiscal year of '25. We've got a large tranche of payments dropping off, and that's why we did drop in the amount of debt that we're paying, because a, a good portion of debt drops off at that time. So I don't know, Adam, if you went into my thoughts down below on page one about, you know, your future projects, things like that.
Wait, Maggie?
Yeah, go ahead.
So right now, we're at, say, 61% debt capacity.
Correct.
We're not even at the 80, which is recommended.
80% is, is how much we let you borrow up against.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, yes, but yeah, let's reverse that thought process.
All right.
Yeah, no, 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 80 is, is the max, we'd like you to not borrow further beyond. I'd rather you be, you know, if you're at 50 to 60%, I'm great with that. When you start to get into that 78, 79% of your debt capacity, that's where we start to get a little fancy.
I see why.
Um, just because things come up, we all know things cost more now as well. You can't change your debt capacity only two ways. Paying off debt, which can be difficult. Paying off debt either requires, you know, that the bonds are callable, you know, we issue debt and it's investment. You don't always have the opportunity to call it right then and there. If we gave you that opportunity, underwriters may not bid on it to begin with, or they give you a pretty high premium style interest rate, because they want to know they're going to hold this investment for a while. The only other way that you grow your debt capacity, instead of paying off debt, is to grow the city. That sometimes is out of this person's board right here. That, that's not in your, you know, it's not that you can go out and do something that will automatically grow the city. So we, we are, are very careful about that. You know, as you grow in a city, some cities have said, well, we're comfortable with going up to 85% of our debt capacity, and surely we can change that. We have used that example as the city of Hiawatha grew, they did scale that down and said, we really only need 15%. Well, that's because 15% was like $4 million, and they just didn't think they needed to just be sitting on. They're not even close to the 85% number, but it was just something that they made a decision on. We really start at about 80%, because I would say this, if we had a major situation happen, and you had no other sources of revenue to go get something, say we had a major water main breaking, if you rip up a huge part of the street, and really, our water rates aren't where we need them to be to pay that kind of debt back, if we have to go borrow it, are we comfortable to say $2.6 million is an okay number?
So that's where Main Street makes me a little nervous, the condition of Main Street. We need some capacity. It's Main Street.
Absolutely.
So I have a question on column five, it's up to almost 70%. How, how does it get to 70% when we drop off debt?
That's what I'm wondering.
That's how you're, that's because you're paying debt back. So, you know, you added debt, but if we add $2.3 million in column number two, and then we pay 820 off in column number three, $845,000, we paid 1.6 million of the 2.3 back, just like that. So that's how you get right back up there, is by having larger debt payments on an annual basis. Having larger debt payments on an annual basis doesn't necessarily mean you're issuing more debt. It could mean that you're just front-loading, or you're making larger principal payments. So maybe we're shortening the timeframe, you know, maybe instead of issuing 20-year debt, we're issuing 15-year debt, or we're issuing 12-year debt, or, or something like that, and by doing that, we're making bigger payments of principal.
Higher number in that column.
What was that?
The higher number there.
The higher number is good, you want, as you go, you want.
That's capacity remaining, so that's good. So we're going up. Yeah, you're.
Yeah, it wasn't, I wasn't understanding.
You want the bottom number that says total GO capacity less the contingency reserve, you want that number to grow over time.
30%.
Correct.
Yeah, so we're at 69 and a half.
I apologize.
It's a number slot.
Yes.
I look at this kind of stuff too at work, so.
Yeah. You want some capacity, you want that capacity to kind of grow every year, and again, that's part of the reason is you're making three significant debt payments in number three, column number three and four, and that's as debt is getting ready to be paid off, so debt that's outstanding, so. So going back a little bit to page one, I know you talked about what some of the projects were, what we know up here at the top are Herbert Hoover Roundabout, estimated project size is about 750,000 of what you would need for borrowing dollars, if I understand that correctly. September of '22 is when the bid is happening, we believe that some, if not all of it, is eligible for TIF certification. We're, we'll confirm all of that with Kevin, but in our initial conversations, we would be able to pay back at least some of that debt with TIF, and that has been our conversation piece, I would say, Mayor, for a couple of years, as we've talked about that project coming up. We also have the East Side Water Main improvements. The total estimated project cost, and I think David's in the room watched by me while I was at the phone in my car, is $3 million. Right now, the plan is to borrow GO bonds for that. There is a portion that is eligible for SRF financing. An SRF approval means that that part of the project bids would probably not happen until July of '23. So I do want to have a little conversation about that, but let's then quickly walk over to Woxie Creek, and then we'll kind of go through the bottom piece here. So that estimated project cost is $1 million. There's some internal funding that is planned to happen. You are getting a sponsored project SRF grant to the tune of about $700,000, and that is based on the size of borrowing for your sewer plant project. So those are dollars, and they are grant dollars that do not get repaid, they are actual grant dollars. It is a very finable mess on how it comes out on your final debt service schedule of the SRF, but what they do is they add the 750 in, as if you were borrowing it, but then they lower the interest rate back down, so that you see no difference in the amount that you would have paid on just the original wastewater treatment project. I keep telling them, I am in finance and it's confusing, we need to figure, this needs to get simpler, so hopefully they're going to work that out. But we've got that $700,000, we've got the local option sales tax of approximately $60,000 set aside, as well as general fund cash set aside. So we have a need in there of possible funding, maybe of $40,000, maybe not, but we aren't going to know that until that October, November timeframe, when that bid comes in, and if we know that that bid truly is $1 million, or if it comes in at $1.50, if it comes in at $950,000. I'm very much impressed there for Dave. But, um, but that's, you know, that's kind of where we're at, saying, right now, we want to believe that that's fully funded. We don't know that that is fully funded at this point.
So do we need to set ourselves up to be funded if it's coming in?
Right. What, yeah, what I would suggest, that if, if the city starts public hearings before the November, October, November bid date, that we would set public hearings high enough to include a little cushion for that, and that cushion could be $50,000, it could be $100,000, whatever it is. You will, this is a type of a project that would be essential to borrowing, and the essential things are water, sewer, stormwater, streets, traffic signals, sidewalks, things like that. This would fall in that essential category, so it wouldn't even be a breakout on your public hearing proceedings. It would just fit with anything else that we were talking about on this project list of water main, Herbert Hoover Roundabout, things like that. So, so we would suggest that if we were to proceed forward with public hearings before this bid, we would just have higher public hearing amounts, and then we'll only borrow what you need. Okay? So those are, those are the, the three main projects that have been identified as, these are projects that the council really would like to move forward, get started with here in fiscal year '23. We'd also note the future projects, which I think you've walked through, the Main Street in connection with possibly I-80, or just in general, Main Street. We've got Cedar Johnson Road Project, and then Water System Improvements, and those are more smaller improvements compared, I, I don't want to say smaller, but they're improvements that are just ongoing compared to this East Main, this, this larger East Main Water project. Some of our concerns right now is, will the project bids come in higher than expected? This is something that we're experiencing on an ongoing basis. What I can say to that fact is, three years ago, we would have been very comfortable having you go out and borrow money before the project bids were in. Today, we are not in that same boat. We, we had this conversation with two other clients today on the phone, we really do need bids to be in before we feel comfortable recommending a sizing of borrowing to you. Because if those bids do come in higher, we think it's important that the council has time to discuss that, and says, we're either going to borrow more, or we're going to come up with other sources of revenue internally, or from another source, you know, or we're not going to go through with the project. We have had a couple of bid rejections, which we haven't seen in, in many, many years. Yes, and, and those are project, not bond issue rejections, but project rejections. We have, we've had a couple of cities reject a project, one, they only got one bid, and were given conversation, given feedback that something maybe wasn't exactly the way that they would like it, and had you done it this way, there may have been a couple of other bidders. And so they decided to go back and fix that in their bid specs, and then put that back out in hopes, and, and we have, we don't have those bids yet, in hopes of maybe garnering a little bit more attention, even if, even if the price remains the same, getting a little bit more attention to that project. So, so that's one of our, our concerns, I would say, is that we want to definitely make sure that we get through the bid portion of whatever you're going to finance. That probably leads us to something in the November, December timeframe for issuance, closing in January. I think that we were on the phone when we talked about it, so you issued your sewer revenue debt as bank qualified, you get $10 million of bank qualification within a year. This is a federal regulation that we are attempting to get moved to $30 million. $10 million was set in 1986, we know that projects cost way more than $10 million. We just cannot get the federal government, they keep sticking it in packages that keep failing, and we just keep wanting, just put it in its own package and let it move right on through. There's, there's definitely bipartisan support for that, so we are going to continue to keep working on that at the federal level. That just means that, starting January 1st, you have $10 million of bank qualification. And that actually coincides quite well with your bidding, if you are looking at September, October, November bid timeframes for us to put together a package, get it sold, and like I said, November, December, close in January. January, then you have that $10 million of bank qualification, as well as, we actually, that time of the year, we think that underwriters are a little bit more hungry in the first part of the year, looking for bids from it, from a perspective of interest rates and, and participation. So, so that's kind of where we're at with that debt capacity concern. We are concerned that if all of the East Side Water Main project gets issued as general obligation debt, that number that we talked about will not look as pretty. Right now, the number that I have figured in to the $2,375 is about $1.5 million of the $3 million of the East Side. We'll talk a little bit about why that is in, in our suggestions below, but, you know, you could deduct off another $1.5 million off that capacity number, putting you a little bit more leveraged, in a more leveraged position, if we were to issue all of the $3 million as GO debt. You have every right to do that. I would like to make some suggestions as to what we could get otherwise from that perspective. And then down below, some of our suggestions, again, I kind of walked through the first one, selling bonds in late November at the earliest, close and receive the proceeds in January, this allows for bank qualification, which is, is quite important on this size of a deal. You know, we have underwriters who only bid on deals that are $10 million and above. That is not the category that you fall into. We want to make sure that we're maximizing our regional underwriters, who are typically bidding. Like my sale today, we had three from regional underwriters, they would be the same types of three bidders that would bid on your interest rates if they were bank qualified, and so that will get to that, making the best effort for you. We could create an interfund loan on the East Side Water Project for further engineering planning, to certify by December 1st of 2022. So the East Side Water Main Project is eligible to be paid with TIF, or part of it at least is eligible to be paid with TIF. That is okay, you will ask for less December 1st of '22 in your TIF asking, if you'll recall. You were set to ask for less last year. We did an interfund loan to begin the process of preliminary design, engineering, planning for that project, and we did it in an amount to get you back up to what your asking had been in the past years. We're not trying to overask in the TIF district, but we really don't want you to not ask for $70,000, $80,000. That could really be used towards the planning of this project. If you don't ask for it, it will falsely go back into everybody's budget for one fiscal year, and then the next year, if you ask for it, because we've issued the debt at that point in time, we'll come right back out. And, and what, and what the problem is there is people then feel like they're getting a bump, because maybe there's growth in the increment, but really that growth is, is false growth, because you're just giving it back. So we're not asking you really to ask for any more dollars this year, we're just saying we'd like to keep it the same. So if this is the timetable we move in, that is the one recommendation that we would have, is that we would create that interfund loan, you've had a conversation with your city attorney, he's well aware of that plan, agrees that that's what we did last year, we easily could do that again this year. Just to kind of keep that level, that also helps.
So the general fund then would pay for some of that engineering and planning?
Likely if we reach our debt. Correct, correct, because we have to create an obligation and then ask for it back. So we would create the obligation of transferring money from here into that capital project fund, and if this was general fund money, yes, there, you're absolutely right. And then in a year and a half, when you get all of those TIF dollars back, you would pay that general fund right back.
Could that be water, stormwater, money?
It could be, it could be, you could, yeah, you could create the, and it could come from a couple of places. So it just as long as we create the interfund loan, and it says it's going to the capital projects fund or, or line item, and then you're going to come back and bring that money back in, when, yes, when, when the TIF dollars come in. Absolutely correct, yes. Especially on a project like the Water Main, easily could be justified to use water or stormwater revenues, if, if those were larger. So that's really our, our second suggestion. Then we get to the tough suggestion, and I may not be the most popular person in the room after this, and that's okay. Considering the East Side Water Main Project into two phases, the two phases would not need to be an equal split this, this evening. I brought them to you in an equal split, 1.5 million for Phase One, 1.5 million for Phase Two. The reason we are asking for you to look at a split is debt capacity. That's one of the main reasons, I'm also asking you to look for a split, because if Um that's one of the main reasons. I'm also asking you to look for a split, uh because if we did finance phase two with the SRF program, uh we could get a much lower interest rate. I would assume our rate today is gonna be somewhere in the three and a half to four percent range. And likely by, you know, the end of the year, that could be four and a half percent. The SRF program right now is offering two percent on twenty-year debt. But we have engineered and are, are to a point where we likely could not submit all of the project to the SRF, because there's quite a timeline that goes with it. Uh so in our conversations with your engineer, we do believe that there's, you know, a second phase that we could, we could notch out to say this is the phase that could be designed um in accordance with all of the SRF regulations and that we could put on the intended use plan, um and then go ahead and issue that debt next year for this, for the second phase, that you get in there. So the, the, the main reason is the interest rate difference. Um the other main reason is debt capacity.
In other words, it's a no, it's a guessing game of either in you lower your interest rate, or you pay more a higher percent in material costs and it's, it's a guessing game. Which one's gonna be?
The, the SRF loan, what requirements does that have? Does that have to be paid by water revenue?
Right, so, so there's, there's two SRF loan, there's two other SRF loans, so the one I am suggesting, yes, you would pay it with a revenue debt, so it does not count against your debt capacity, and it would need to be paid with water revenues. And that's where this conversation turns, and I've become the lead, the least popular person in the room. I get that.
Because water rates have to go.
Because water rates would have to go up based on what the analysis is that we've done, the contract that you've entered into for some water system maintenance. Um we definitely agree that water rates would have to go up um for one point five million dollars of borrowing in the SRF program. Um there, there would be no way of getting around. It does not. So the SRF does offer a two-pronged approach. You can do a GO debt or a water revenue debt. Um the nice thing about that is we could split that up, so we could split it up and say seven fifty is water revenue, and we're gonna raise the rates to accomplish that, and seven fifty is GO. It doesn't necessarily accomplish all of the, the fact that I wanna keep it off your debt capacity, because even an SRF debt, if it is GO, will come off your debt capacity. But you would then have the opportunity to pay that portion um with anything other than water revenues, if that, if that's the case. You could pay it with water revenues if there was excess, but you could also pay it with a debt service levy, um and any other, you know, that you felt was necessary to the project.
In other words, we wouldn't be raising the water rates as high.
Right. Here's my problem. Here's my problem with it is Water Main itself is only part of the project. So then there's sewer, and there's, and there's roads, and there's all this other stuff that we're doing, that we're putting that burden on our water pay for.
Which is not right.
That ain't right.
Right. I agree.
I understand, and I knew that.
A hybrid is, a hybrid might be capable for us.
Yeah.
So this might be a question for Dave. How much of this project, of the Water Main Project, is streets? Streets that have to be, that don't have to be improved because of water?
We have two streets that we're planning to do. Those are being done because partially being impacted by the water main. They could time to take care of that situation. So, back for, in there doing work on it is what triggers that, but the whole reconstruction. So when you look at that, if we're talking maybe a million dollars for the street work, possibly the rest is Water Main, you're somewhere in that area. But a lot of it is, it's just service restoration. We put a water main in, trench.
So that's about fifty, fifty, split.
I'd have to run the numbers, but I don't know if those two streets are.
So, but these connecting streets like Albert Green and, and College?
College, College needs done. It's steep enough that we're losing so much gravel into the storm sewers. Orange Street, that's debatable. You know, I, I don't know that Orange Street would necessarily need to be done. That's only one.
From a maintenance perspective, that was Matt.
Orange goes up by the church.
Yeah.
And it's, it's narrow and not in very good shape. So we're, we're saying that. Is that because we have to, we have to run water mains up those streets to get to fifth and sixth?
It's from fifth and sixth, or it's from fifth to sixth, so it's actually only the far east blocks. It's not the whole, it's not four blocks there, it's two.
Hundred yards.
So that would be a question for you guys as a council. The answer is, I assume hundred and fifty out of the six hundred thousand going in the College Street, and then what do we have for Orange?
Um so what, what are you looking for? What are we, what decisions must we make?
Right, so, and, and I, and I do appreciate that question. Um you know, again, it's my recommendation for debt capacity purposes. It's my recommendation for interest rate purposes, whether you do a GO through the SRF or you do a revenue debt through the SRF, it's two percent. And in a rising interest rate market, that's gonna make a significant difference. It, the, the difference is on your payments. If I have to go issue four percent bonds for all three million of it, and we could issue two percent bonds for one point five million of it, um that's where we see that significant difference in what the repayment looks like, whether that's from a GO debt capacity, you know, GO kind of in that set capacity, or from the use of water revenues um from that. Or a hybrid of the two, absolutely. And, and we do actually do a lot of hybrids. Um there are a lot of cities that are not willing to raise the water rates, and I understand you have a significant sewer rate increase that you, you've taken off. Um so, so I do completely understand that hesitation. So, so I think the one thing, and, and I don't think we need to have a decision tonight, how Adam may disagree with me, but I think sooner than later, we need to have a decision on if any of the East Main is going to be, if you would like it to be eligible for the SRF. Dave needs to know that probably to get facility plans in and get an intended use plan application. Were we talking, Dave, the September, at the earliest, December at the latest? Um and so, we're talking, you know, sooner than later, if we wanna go SRF, because there's a three-month period from the time that you apply to the time that you get the DNR approval, and then there is um further wouldn't call that, Dave, sorry, I'm not the engineer.
So there's a commission that has to approve the IAF on the list, and they'll interview into the IAF list, start the environmental review process, give it some review, or they have to go through field work to make sure that you don't have our ecological, any sort of uh impacts to the tribes. That work can't be done until the weather is suitable, field works. Sometimes in the spring, I'm getting started on that, which means we can't bid the project until all that process is complete. Early July, August next year.
My suggestion would be is that as a council, we work this thing backwards. Everybody goes home and thinks about this for till the next meeting, and come back with how, how much are you comfortable raising our water rates? And then we work in that direction. So if we were comfortable raising it two dollars per thousand gallons or whatever.
Why aren't we raising water rates when it's streets and roads that we're basically talking about?
Time out. We're doing this because you want water mains.
I know, exactly.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a water deal.
So. Uh it does if you choose a revenue loan. So if, if we choose a revenue loan, so again, we are suggesting that one point five million, you're ready to go with one point five million of the three million dollar project, and again, those are probably the main reconstructions of those roads, those full reconstructions that are not gonna be eligible for the SRF. We know there are portions that are not gonna be eligible. So we are saying issue that as part of this year's GO bond issue. And however you wanna pay for that, you can pay for that, and use that money throughout the construction of the project. Then the eligible pieces to the SRF, which again, if we're talking about a fifty-fifty split, that's what we would do the SRF with. If you choose under the SRF to go all revenue, then yes, you have to raise the water rates accordingly. If you choose to do a hybrid of GO and water revenue, that's where I agree, Colton. You would, you can go home and you can say to me, Maggie, we're only willing to go up five dollars per household, and we're only going, willing to go up six dollars per household, and if that's the situation, we'll come back and we'll spit out that number on a two percent interest rate. And then that's what we will do as a revenue, and you'll do the rest of it as a GO.
About seven twenty-nine or so for a thousand.
For your base rates.
Okay, so I have another question for you, Dave. So the SRF loan requires that all material is, is US, that we were saying? So is there a huge cost savings if we don't go to SRF and not have to use government restrictions to do it? You save a lot of money there. What, where I'm getting at is if we could save enough money that the higher interest rate would offset.
So they have to have a person that's dedicated for this record keeping on that stuff. They also have that person that have payroll tracking, so you start adding all administrative costs, and some of the other impacts to us. It could be ten, but fifteen percent more expensive. We really don't know that, but that's kind of what people speculate is. It, it's obviously.
When we run them, and we, in the past, we've taken Dave's numbers and said, okay, so let's just say it's twenty percent. Let's say, just we add twenty percent to the project, then I run them at today's bottom market rates as a revenue debt versus the SRF. I've never not had the SRF win. So, just, I mean, that's just for, I mean, two percent, it still wins, and part of it is, is again, as we just said, the Davis Bacon is prevailing wage rate. These are sophisticated projects, right? So they're pro, and in today's labor market, they're probably paying the prevailing wage rate, but as Dave mentioned, it's the tracking that they're paying the prevailing wage rate, that somebody is having to track it, that they've got that administrative piece to it, that they've got to turn in some forms that say they're paying it. Um so that's, you know, that is kind of where we, we talk about that, right?
Does Lynch bid the Bacon Davis jobs, you know?
I don't know if they would do that if it's SRF.
Larry wouldn't like that one bit.
Right, so there, there's a lot of it works, very, very much so.
I do wanna go through page three with you of my handout, if I could take some, some time there. Um this is the two million three seventy-five. This is if you borrowed two million three hundred and seventy-five thousand this year. Um what I did here, this again, I remind you, is Herbert Hoover at seven fifty. This is one point five million dollars of East Main, assuming we can make a split there, and we're gonna issue the first part of the East Main Water Project under a GO for this year. As well as about, I put about a fifty to a hundred thousand dollar cushion in there onto the Wopsey Creek, just assuming that may come in a little bit higher. So if you borrowed two million three hundred and seventy-five thousand, I ran the interest rates from a three point two five down to a four point five. I kept it fairly short to going out to a maturity of fifteen years at twenty thirty-eight. The total debt payment is right there in the center where it says estimated series twenty twenty-three debt service. You've got payments in the first few years of around two hundred and fifty to two hundred and um you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They do drop off in some of the later years, and that's really because I only took uh the road projects out about ten years, and then I took out um for the fifteen-year of the water. You can tell me take it all out fifteen, that's fine, um but what I really was getting at there is, is we don't sometimes like to finance the road pieces um longer than about ten years, twelve years. We have salt, we have sand, we put, you know, we, we run our snowplows over them. Um we don't want you to be paying for something if there's major renovations that are gonna need to be made to that. What I also then did in the center is, when I ran these, I put again that Herbert Hoover piece of the project on its own debt service schedule. So in the first red column that says less tip revenue for the HH project, I'm basically saying if we paid for the HH project with TIF revenue, that'd be about nine ninety-two, ninety-five thousand, ninety-seven thousand dollars a year over the ten-year period. That remains then all of the Water Main and maybe a, a very small, minute portion of Wopsey Creek, right? If, if that was what we had to put on the debt service levy, so I know you were interested, I think there was a comment made that potentially you, you'd be more apt to raising property tax rates. So if that first phase of the wa, of the Water Main Project got done with debt service levy, tax the people, because maybe it's the portion that is street reconstruction, et cetera. We are looking in the green column of somewhere on average of eighty-five cents over the fifteen years. Meaning that if you are at ten dollars a thousand right now, you go to ten dollars and eighty-five cents on an N. This is our scale based on today's interest rates. So if you said, you know what, we're willing to go up to, you know, I, I'll throw this back to Colton, who, who mentioned water rates. I think you have the same conversation about what are we willing to go up in property tax rates to get all these projects done. And if that's a dollar, then we'll adjust, and maybe we can shorten this up. If that's only fifty cents, then we're gonna have to adjust, and we're gonna have to roll it down to twenty years. But I will note that interest rates will get higher the further out that we go. So then your benefit is not as big when we stretch it out just because you're paying more in interest. But I did wanna point that out, that was something that was very, very important um to us.
What portion of this is the Water Main?
This would be about one point five million of the Water Main, about one and a half million of the Water Main. The full seven fifty for Herbert Hoover, and then roughly, I think I put in fifty to seventy-five thousand for um Wopsey Creek. Just in case we needed a cushion there. Yep. Yeah, so that's great. Yeah, that's a good question. So that's, that's next page, see, Dave, like, he must have looked at the presentation. He's just leading the way, which is great. So the next page does talk about the revenue debt that is outstanding. Uh the city does have two water revenue debts outstanding, one from two thousand and five, one from two thousand and seven. You can see that they both are set to mature in twenty twenty-six. So we still have a couple, three years that we're gonna have to levy for those payments in the water fund, which is associated with the water rates. I don't want you to pay attention to two thousand and seven. It is very, very minor. It is about fifty-four hundred dollars a year um that is being paid. That was a very small eighty-three thousand dollars. I'm not really sure, but I kind of wanna say maybe this was a Water Main meter reader project possibly, would that have been what that is? We have all these very small ones from about that timeframe. Did you go to electronic meter reads possibly in that timeframe?
No, that was when we didn't have any money, so if anything, cost more than about fifty grand, they had to.
So, yeah, so it was a very small eighty-three thousand. I, why I say that is most of our SRF loans are around a hundred thousand. It was putting in electric meter readers, and maybe they got some grant funding, and this was the end result of what they still owed. Um and so, so that one did not refinance down to three point two five percent.
Expire?
Uh twenty twenty-six is when they mature. So it has been our suggestion, we have spoken with both Adam and Heidi, and we believe that you, in the next few months, even if it's by June, should pay off the two thousand and seven to just get it off the books. It's at a three point two five. It's at a three point two five, it will not refinance down to the two percent because of the size of it. They have a, they have a requirement that it has to save so much money before they will allow the automatic rate decrease on the SRF. So it would be our suggestion, we're just talking about, you know, twenty thousand dollars that remains of principal. Um, you would be able to stop the accrual of interest if you paid that in December or on June first. Yes, or if likes to be paid off on December one or June one, when you're making a normal payment. So we'll sort of work with that, will be a resolution that comes in front of the council. But Heidi, you know, said, we just want to make sure that, yes, that works, we have the money, we know that you do. But we are, part of our decision is again, as Dave said, based on what decisions you folks all made. The other debt from two thousand and five on the left-hand column, uh, that is the larger of the debt. And, and Dave brings up a very good point that if you were to do, you know, right now you're paying about fifty-five thousand dollars a year for that debt, that is coming out of your water system right now. So that would free up fifty-five thousand. There's a couple of approaches to that. The water revenue, if we did a tranche of the SRF loan with water revenue debt, we could stall the majority of principal until we got to fiscal year twenty-seven. So we would be able to make small water, uh, principal payments on the water revenue debt of maybe one or two thousand dollars a year, which could help, um, on a rate increase, right? It could help you bring up and maybe level off things at sixty or sixty-five thousand dollars of debt payments for whatever you issue through the SRF, as well as what this is. They will not let us stall principal much more than about three to four years, but they will let us stall some principal to wrap this debt around. We technically cannot refinance, they will not let us refinance and stretch this out because it's already at the two percent interest rate. They will not let you refinance, you will either pay it off in full or just leave it. And then, but they do allow you to wrap the new debt around the existing debt. So if we could, if we were able to get the new debt, um, into a range of fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year, that may not have a, as big of an impact on your water system rates. With that being said, nobody wants to raise water rates. I would also then have you look at the contract that you have entered into to do water maintenance throughout and determine if now is the appropriate time to raise water rates to out, offset those costs as well. Because those are some costs that are coming into your budget that you really have not probably done on a regular basis for an extended period of time.
I think one of these was a water paint, water tower paint. Maybe the eighty-three thousand dollars.
And, and that very well could be, that, that very well could be. I have, that goes back to the start of my time at SCER, and I'd have to look back at that and see that.
I was still a teenager.
I don't think I really care.
The last page I did just want to bring you, because this does talk about if you went SRF and you decided to do all of it as a water revenue note. And you wanted to wrap some debt in the first couple, three years around that existing debt. Altogether, you'd be looking at about a hundred thousand dollars a year in payments. And that's all, that's one point five million dollars of water revenue debt. So think about it from this perspective, you'd go from fifty-five thousand dollar payments right now, you have to increase them by about forty to forty-five thousand dollars. And then once that debt is all paid off, you'd still be in that range of about ninety-nine to a hundred thousand dollars a year. And what I did is just said, if that's all one point five. So if you only borrowed seven fifty, um, from the SRF in a water revenue debt and you did seven fifty with the GO, meaning you could still pay that with debt capacity, we, this, this amount would probably drop to that fifty to sixty thousand dollar range. And again, that much may be more applicable with where your current water rates are. I'm still not saying that you may not have to raise them a little bit, but it would be an easier low, um, to the water rates.
Credit out of all your years. We could kind of do the, the percentage like we did. Every year we increase the percentage of two.
Working on ordinance language to, we're trying to increase rates, just two percent every year, just so we don't fall behind.
Which is our suggestion. Um, I, I would encourage you then, if any good questions back to look at the budget and see if the expenses on utilities, anything like that goes up two percent, if you pay increases to your wages. Uh, if you give them better benefits, if they, you know, if insurance goes up, those are all costs associated with your water system. People forget that there's a whole lot of admin that goes into running your water system and, and paying utilities. I know that, um, we're seeing that. And so two percent is pretty typical of what we are recommending, folks, um, for, for a rate increase.
So one of my biggest concerns is, and I voiced this with Adams a couple of times, is our main street through the middle of town here. The water is a big issue. If that gets to a, a point, that's, that's major, that's all street, that's all water, that's a complete tear out, that's going to be expensive.
So we need to pass, we need to save some capacity.
I, I think so, I mean, I need to get to a point where in, in five years, that main street is the street, the surface is actually in bad shape that we have to replace it. Going, we're going deep, going into the water.
Cedar Johnson Road hasn't been talked about either, we're looking at in twenty twenty-seven.
That's the number that's not on here, that's where, uh, we want to make sure we have that capacity. That, that's one of the areas we want to make sure we have that capacity, we anticipate that to be a larger project.
Before I got here, I think Dave was thinking that was two and a half million and that was pre-inflation.
At one time it was one point five.
That's in five years, our growth should take care of.
So does anybody feel, I mean, I got a kind of an opinion of how this gets done, I, I like what you're laying out. I'm kind of for the hybrid SRF, GO for the last one and a half million. Um, some sort of hybrid scenario, that's, that's what I'm laying it.
And again, the SRF is just the program, how we split the SRF into a water and a GO. Again, the GO still comes against your debt capacity, it's going to be a lower interest rate for sure. But, um, that's going to give you the flexibility of what, how to pay the GO piece. But it also is going to give you the flexibility to wrap some of that debt around your existing water, um, debt that will be dropping off in a few years.
And road use, could that be used to pay for?
Road use tax could be used to pay for the GO portion of either the SRF or the GO portion of the two point three million that I, I've shown you, as long as you are doing road projects with it, right? If, if that, if the, if what we've shown in today's scenario of two point three million dollars, if that is really road reconstruction of those roads that absolutely road use, which can offset then your overall tax rate. But I do appreciate, uh, Councilmember Miller's comment about what you're willing to raise. That will help us back into these numbers a little bit easier.
Terms of use in road use, I'm going to say no, because we only get two hundred and fifty thousand a year. About sixty percent of that is salary wages, snow removal, your salt, your materials and your maintenance is your other thirty to forty percent of it. And that's just your, I would not use road use tax to pay off any type of debt, because that's, you know.
Um, I got a question, I'll see if we got like ten more minutes. So if the Hoover Highway gets, Hoover Roundabout gets paid for a hundred percent tip, is that possible?
Uh, that's what, that's our question. I was thinking Cedar Johnson was the one that we don't, it's not all on the tip district, but is it her?
Well, with the half the road on Cedar Johnson is in Johnson County.
Is in Johnson County, so that's not.
You could get them to annex it in the city, since we paid, we had to maintain it. We didn't buy it, we just gave.
Bought the rights to maintain it.
Yeah.
I suppose they want money for it. No, I think, I mean, I don't think there'd be an issue.
Okay, so is that too much tip? I guess that's my point, is that too much tip?
Based on our projections, no. We anticipate that at your five point four percent growth, some of that is related to properties that are going to lead you to more incremental value. So we're going to actually look at what you produce in increment this year. And that's why we're saying that you're going to ask for something in an interfund loan to create an obligation for this East Main Water Project. And that number last year was about eighty, eighty-eight thousand, that number they issued could be a hundred and eight thousand. And again, I said, we're not going to ask for more, but we are going to ask for what there is in growth. Um, so if there is growth, we're going to try to get that asking number to up, to quantify what that growth number has been, so that again, we keep asking. We do anticipate more growth there, which is going to free up more increment for you to be able. You can't lose what you didn't have.
We didn't have it in the first place, what she's saying is the new stuff you take.
Right, we, we want you to take the new stuff when it's available, if you have the obligations, that's the law. You have the obligation, we want you to take the new stuff before it's in.
Trust me, we can do.
The old stuff, you don't want to go back.
Correct. And that's why, again, I was saying, we don't want to drop our asking. Because then everyone falsely gets this sense that they get an extra twenty thousand dollars in their general funds. And then all of a sudden you go back and you ask for all of that next year and more and save, you know, hire, you know, park person with that money and, and, and no longer is that there.
To Roger's point, I think what he's trying to bring up is with the backfill not coming back, that's a hundred thousand a year. And then the rest, some of the residential rollback that took place, our general funds hurting a little bit more.
We're going to have more.
So that's, I guess, that's what he's echoing, that he wants to make sure we're not taking too much.
All right, nice chat.
All right, last, but thank God.
Do you have your last comments, or you got Maggie? Or anybody have?
The only question I have, and this goes to the Wopsey Creek project. I don't know how we got from a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar project two years ago to now a million dollar project.
It became a much larger.
We had additional stuff to get the SRF.
I thought we were going to possibly use some of that seven hundred thousand on other projects, but we're just going to try to use it all here. So is this, so is this extra money that we want to spend on that, is that, are we looking at lowering our, our flooding issue?
That's part of the overall project, trying to use that to stabilize the green channel within our project. We have to be able to separate the two. Complicated, but.
What, so what do you need from us?
See, we just need direction, so if your direction is to follow what Maggie presented here. If you're feeling doubts, we need to know now because that's going to affect.
I think the one direction that we need sooner than later is, is Dave applying to the SRF for parts. The part that would be eligible to the SRF, that is the most important deadline that we have to hit. Yeah, so we have to, we have to hit that deadline so he can get that application done, so he can get all of the paperwork. So hopefully the environmental review runs smoothly at the understaffed DNR office. Um, but, but that's why we want to get on that.
Just direction notes unless you want resolution.
Here's what I would say, getting started on it, and then probably as you submit the IUP, when you put that together, that may require the actual action. Can tell him to get started on it.
New contract with B and K?
Is this ever, as, whatever, is that pretty much, uh, seventy-five percent guarantee that we get it or more?
In the SRF program, as long as we stay within eligible project expenses, it's pretty high success rate.
I've never seen my twenty-two years been turned down.
That gets turned down for the type of project that you're talking about.
So does it have to ultimately go out for bid first?
Yeah, you would likely be bidding, I would assume, what we would consider phase one of the SRF, of the East Main Water Project, still yet this fall. And the part that we believe is eligible for the SRF is what we get bid probably next July, next summertime. Um, once you, all your approvals, your environmental review is done in the, in that process. You would be going forward with still bidding the parts that we are pretty certain the SRF are not eligible at the East Main. So you could get started on those types of the projects, so those portions of the projects.
So if we go that direction, then, and we get approved for that, then there's no backing out of it.
Uh, no, there is. So once you're approved on the SRF.
That's what I don't want.
No, once you're approved through the SRF, I mean, you don't have to take the SRF.
We can back out.
You can back out, they can't.
Yeah, but that's what I don't want, I don't want to back out of it. Yeah. New council or you guys? You wanted to drop the project how many times?
Backing out of the project and backing out of the funding mechanism are two different things. You have the right to back out of the funding mechanism. If you choose, if we see a verbal recession and interest rates plummet again, which I don't think they will, and you want to go out and just borrow it with a revenue bond or a GO bond instead of the SRF, you have every right to do that. Um, it's for some reason that happens. You will be though, probably by that point in time by November, likely, you will already have accepted, um, phase one of, of this project. Um, and, and going forward with that, you will borrow. Phase one is probably road reconstructions, I would assume, of the streets that we probably don't believe are eligible to the SRF.
I thought we were digging stuff up to put stuff under, so we can really do one without the other, can't we?
Right.
I guess that's more of a date.
If there's anything that's oversized with the fire protection, SRF to part that, so we're going to make sure.
Because I was just trying to think of what it's. I guess a short question was, can you still do stuff or do we have to wait until the bids of July of twenty-three to be able to start it?
That's all I need. As long as the answer is yes, I'm good.
When Nick gets a call saying he, he doesn't do anything, he wants to go drive over there, I voted yes for that.
Well, thank you very much for having me, we'll just kind of keep in touch with the administration on this. And if, again, you come back and you've got some ideas about, you know, rates and, and property taxes and all that, let us know. But I'm sure that I will be back in front of you or at least send you more information as.
We may come up with a maximum water rate.
Right.
That we would.
Correct. And we'll, we'll be approaching these dates. Um, again, I don't think that we need to set any dates of public hearing for the GO borrowing yet. But I would say that as we get into that September, October timeframe, that we may need to start doing, um, looking at that, just so we can keep the timeline going.
Okay, let's let you go, we got a, we'll have a short.
One more question. So this rate here, the, you're suggesting for increase, we need to do two percent on top of that?
This street column is property tax only.
Oh.
For a thousand dollars of, so again, take your current property tax rate for the city and increase it by.
So that's what your neighbors would be playing, basically, when they get taxed.
So this isn't, you didn't do any water increase.
I did not do any water increases. I knew that would make me even less.
We, we have a pretty good idea. We're gonna have to do that. It's just a matter of how much we want.
Exactly.
Doing water.
That's exactly right.
All right. Suck it to a joint. All those in favor?
So either way, you can change. You're either paying a monthly or you're paying. So either way. Depending on what.
I never go to them unless they're.
Come out of your water fund that you use or is it gonna come out of your tax?
Little old lady, probably with a fixed income, you know, like the high water. Cause I don't use that much water.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie.
Drive safely.
Sleep and shower. What do you need there anymore?
I don't buy water.
That's what I hear.
All right, we're gonna get this done in twenty-five minutes, okay?
Okay, I'm gonna put my alarm going.
It should be, it should almost be quicker than that, less animal runs off.
I got nothing.
We need him to talk.
Oh, they're talking about twenty-five minutes of the meeting, unless you talked a lot in your reports or other things.
We do have stuff we need to discuss. Let me know here.
I just discussed, right? Yeah, we could have had a.
It's over an hour. Get this regular meeting under, actually, the regular meeting of, uh, June eighteen.
Let us do the flag, the United States of America, a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a being and justice for all.
School call, please.
All right, we'll go with Mayor Loftman.
Here.
Councilperson Miller.
Here.
Sexton.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Stulman.
Here.
Good Wyler.
Here.
Any motion someone to approve tonight's agenda?
So move.
All those in favor, say aye. The consent agenda consists of the minutes of the last meeting on July fifth, regular council meeting. A class C liquor license with Sunday sales for Mexico Lindo, effective August fifth. Um, the acceptance of the resignation of Tom Berger from the Parks and Rec Commission and the claims.
So move. Second.
I can't do, there, see. Yes, I don't have a question. Anything else, anybody on the planes? All right, um, all those in favor of the, uh, no way, I gotta go. Let's go ahead and vote on the consent agenda.
All right, we'll go with Miller.
Yes.
Sexton. Dean.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Okay, um, presentation's open communication. If anyone wants to speak to the council, you can say your thing now. If not. You have something to say?
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the non-sent agenda. Second reading of ordinance seven ninety-six, animal protection and control, motion please.
So move.
Saw hand raised by Jody for a second. Um, so this is the dog bite definition and, uh. Uh, any comments? Hearing none. Let's proceed to vote, please. Second reading.
All right, Good Wyler.
Yeah.
Dean.
Yeah.
Stulman.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash seventy-two, authorizing the transfer of funds for the fire truck. Motion please.
So move.
I'm assuming this is rolling it into a fire operation equipment fund.
Yes.
When do we cut the check for that? Pretty soon then?
Right after this meeting.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it, you guys have voted on this before. It's just for the authority part, so.
All right, uh, go ahead and vote on.
Sorry, thanks. Sexton.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Good Wyler.
Yeah.
Okay, Hoover Days fundraising started out really slow and then.
City. Oh.
Yeah, you can.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This was your baby, though, so you take it, Roger.
Started out really slow. Uh, thank you very much to, uh, two major developers, Advantage Development. And, uh, Heritage Hill, um, Blue Sky Development. He was five thousand dollars each, so. Um, Altorver fifteen hundred, Newport Industries, surprise on that one, but thank you very much, everyone, and roll up their, their five, five hundred dollars from last. Thank you, B and K. Anything else to add?
Uh, I know Leslie wanted to break down the numbers for you, cause I know you guys haven't seen it in the past. Who's donated to what? So majority outside of your, your band and title sponsors, that was sixteen thousand. Uh, but if anyone donated for something outside of that, so children's events was eight thousand. In donations was, or fireworks was twenty-one hundred, but we did get more of your household or individuals who donate your smaller dime, dollar items to fireworks. Um, but just thought we'd break that down for you. Cause I know that's been asked, but I think our goal was twenty, twenty-two thousand. So we're able to, to get past that by a couple thousand. I do want to make sure we thank Jesse Simon because she did help out a lot in making sure we were contacting the right people. Um, and as we get to, to know, as we get to coordinate things a little bit better, I think at times people try and talk to her in terms of who to donate. So, um, that's one of the things we need to flesh out from our hometown committees. Seems like everybody goes to Jesse now for donations, so, um, and it's good. I mean, she's doing her job, but there's some confusion that I think we need to improve upon.
So a part of the, um, committee formed to maybe reorganize Hoover Days planning, this will all get ironed out. Okay, um, anything else in your report, Adam?
Yeah, how long do I take? Um, I'll summarize at least my conference, so you know a little bit what's going on outside of the, you know, the leadership management stuff. Um, Iowa State University is still expecting labor participation rates to stay low. So our current labor market, they assume is going to continue where you get less applicants per job. Where you probably, the employee pay or has a higher advantage than the past. And a lot of times it was always, say, your boss's way all the time. Um, I think us as administrators need to learn, there needs to be a little bit more give and take, um, now that jobs are less competitive. In Iowa, not nationwide, but in Iowa, the people who are dropping out of the labor market are, obviously, it's, it's each age group. But the highest age, age groups are from forty-five to fifty-five and fifty-five to sixty-five. It is not young adults. They have a higher labor participation rate the last three years than what they've had in Iowa. And so, um, you don't know for sure exactly why, but of the people they've surveyed who have dropped out since COVID. Seventy-five percent has nothing to do with COVID at all. So, um, it's probably likely somebody wanted retired early. They wanted to play the game. Now that inflation's up. So you will probably hear some weird things from Iowa State encouraging our legislators to encourage more, um, imme- immigration rules. Um, that's how they see is the number one fit to get more people in Iowa is to be a little bit more flexible with immigration. Um, just cause people aren't having that many kids with how expensive, you know, those are like basically the two biggest options. Is either more kids or more people. So you probably will hear some weird things from Iowa State, um, in terms of recommendations from our legislators. But for the foreseeable future, expect to not get very many applicants per job opening that we have here at the city. Or at Park Service or at your employment that you guys work for. That's just the trend that's gonna, gonna stay there. In terms of legal updates, we will want to make sure we update our sidewalk ordinance to include, um, I guess negligence. So if we include that they've got to pay for it, then we're perfectly within our right to do that. If somebody trips on, say, sidewalk that hasn't been maintained. If we didn't know about it, then it would be that homeowner's fault to pay for those. We have to have that in our, in our, in our ordinance. Um, there are some interesting things on nuisance abatements. Um, if it's a dangerous building, we do have the right to use eminent domain. Um, Kia Cut went through some issues. As long as it's a dangerous building and it has to be done, um, taken care of right away. We don't necessarily have to pay them for it. Our code of ordinance does. You know, you know, we have to give everybody their due rights and processes. You have to give them times to, reasonable time to, to clean it up. But there. So.
We can't. It's gotta be reasonable. What about, um, when we have to spend fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's not, that's not really our concern. If it has to meet, if it has to meet the code, that's, that's not our problem. It's probably got like, that's their problem. Yes, didn't you?
There's been some interesting cases with sewer issues. If it's ma- if there's a sewage issue that's, say, leaking into another property, they're recommending us not do anything at all. If it's affecting our public infrastructure, say, our main, then that's when we should get involved. So there's been a couple of residents that have tried to sue cities, um, because, say, sewer, a service line is not working and it's spilling over into another property. Don't get involved is basically what they're saying. We get involved and that's when the city's liable. Now, if it's leaking into the streets, yes, get involved. Or if it's affecting multiple, multiple properties, yes, but if it's just, if it's neighbor on neighbor, don't, don't get involved. So, um, then there's a couple other police things that I'll need to talk with, with chief about, um, but I don't want to get into that nitty gritty. Although it won't help our current police hire, um, Indian Hills in southern Iowa is trying to. One, they passed a, a bond, so they're increasing their law enforcement academy. So they're gonna be able to train a lot more, um, students in the criminal justice field. They're also trying to apply to do your police academy training. They're a couple of years out. But hopefully there will be two or three places to go through academy training than just one spot right now that's only open twice a year. So, um, not gonna help with this one, but hopefully, um, if we ever do need another officer in the next couple of years. Hopefully, there will be more candidates out there and more options to train. That is the biggest, the biggest things that were, um, talked about at the conference last week. Other than that, um. I'll have chiefs on.
Hey, Chief. Corey, you want to update us on a police officer search?
Uh, right now, we have, uh, one candidate that has successfully passed the testing to this point. We had physical testing this Saturday. We had only one candidate show up. One made prior arrangements. Uh, he was testing with another agency, so we're gonna use his scores there. Uh, but the candidate that did show up, uh, was unsuccessful during the physical. So right now, we're down to one candidate.
So we probably will reopen it. I think Chief and I will discuss. We should probably see if this candidate that's passed is worthy of consideration. But probably what we'll do is just keep it, keep it open, do his second round of trying to get applicants. But as I kind of told Roger, um, I kind of expected three to six months would probably be how long it takes.
What's it been, two?
Yeah, one maybe. Yeah, cause we, we opened it up right away, so. We're at level one, but.
So we're, we're gonna take our time, I guess.
And I asked Chief to just kind of look into what his schedule needs to be like and his crew. If we do go into the six months, uh, and to continue coordinating and talking with the county. So anytime an officer needs vacation or whatnot, they're still getting it. The county's been helping us out. Uh, but I, I assume at a certain point we'll hit where we need to talk about county help or whatnot. Right now, they're doing it out of goodwill, uh, but I'm sure if we get into multiple months, I could be coming back to you guys, um, just for additional help, so. Nothing.
Forgot what we need to know from you.
Um, we have a citation file on that.
Nuisance house. The nuisance house.
The new, the nuisance house, yes. The initial appearance is July twenty.
If that person challenges it, then we would have to do.
Go to court later.
Court proceeding, so.
I will stay away.
I have a second bat. No, we're, I'm not calling you anything.
Man, do you want?
Get some vengeance.
I could fill in.
So we've had a lot of calls about, um, people playing feds and, uh, new submissions. Lowton Ridge, um. And up the. Backside of Solomon. So there's stormwater easements at all of those. Most of the people that are buying those houses don't know. So they gotta put a fence up. They come in and tell them, especially in Lowton Ridge, it was thirty foot in the backyard. So there may at some point be some people sitting there. See if that's something that can change.
We don't want to put those fences in the stormwater.
No, it's part of the.
Catch us too much free and.
It's part of a closet when they're putting it that they, that there wouldn't be. The biggest problem with them, like the one in Lowton Ridge is. Peterson Valley didn't have them, so. The whole thirty foot was put in the backyard of Lowton Ridge, which the rest of them were twenty foot, so I'm not sure why. So we got thirty foot there, that's thirty foot of backyard.
And their backyards weren't that big, they were again.
I was on it one day and they had about twenty foot to their house that they'd be able to fence in, so I think they're not taking out.
There are some that are already in.
There's some that are already in. There's a couple of ones that went into easement. As the next section's put in, it'll be the same thing. They won't be able to build. The nice thing up there is they only lost ten foot. So it's only the back ten.
The people on the back side, it's right.
Well, both. Cause it was put in as the, as it was developed. So everybody's, you know, both lots of them that are shared on like Lowton Ridge. Yeah. Lowton Ridge, they don't have that. Because Peterson Valley didn't have the easement back there soon. So. Just, uh, yeah.
Apparently, apparently they weren't told that there were these, neither realtor, which would be. B R Horton.
Your abstract, but.
Yeah. Discussing B R Horton. They have got to mow. Tall weeds and grass south of mine, that whole hill there. It's nothing but weeds and thistles and. I'm, I'm not saying they have to sod it. But they need to start mowing. They were told by their realtor. Talked to a B R Horton representative.
Yeah.
You know, relatives. Well.
What about the storm sewer? Now it's, it's down at the end of. Not storm sewer, the water retention.
That is still, B R Horton doesn't own that. I was told. They don't own it yet. Or, oh, they, they were also told there's no association. They have to have.
They were told there's no association.
No.
Which.
We're not gonna take care of that.
No.
Detention base. It was supposed to be an association. Well, you know, some cars are gonna send your, your association.
We have to.
Other than that, if we had to maintain it, then we're gonna get assessed for it. Then nothing you can do about it.
That's what some of our agreement says. If I got that, I'll look at it. We're gonna through that. Basically, it's a subdivision doesn't take care of it. There's supposed to be an H L A that takes care of it. If the H L A. Dissolves or isn't there, it falls back on homeowners, which the city can go. As the work to done.
So we're gonna look like mad people.
Oh, D R Horton's or is that K L M's?
It's, uh, it's the developer's agreement, but when they sell the lots, they, it's, uh, it's, uh, Matt Adams or. Uh, they did Lowton Ridge, so.
Okay, okay, okay.
I mean, they're supposed, because they will want to get rid of the lot, because they, they might have, they hold title to it. Usually when most of the lots are sold or built on, they'll deed the. Be the detention based into the homeowner association, but. I don't think there's been one established. From the homeowners I've talked to, they don't, they don't know about one, so.
And it's not being assessed.
Or their.
A little bit of a problem there.
So on the. D R Horton didn't know that, that's, I mean.
They didn't know about the H L A, well, the guy. Got it.
The national guy.
And then they also didn't know that they have to grade all the way up to the other homes. Unsold, so they thought they, so they left it, so now they have to come back and.
Yeah, it's about twenty, twenty foot strip.
I have talked to our building inspector to make sure that they formally walk every corner of the lots now, because we're seeing that, where. They're not grading the last, or they run out of sod, then they're not sodding the last ten foot. Cause they don't want to bring out another roll, so.
So I'm complaining about the weeds and crap.
Well, that's, that goes on their nuisance abatement.
B R Horton's, we should be able to, I can talk to them.
They may mow it.
Get them.
Get it started.
Cause they, I talked to them about the behind the homes that ten foot, whatever, if they didn't agree. It's, uh, so I guess if they don't do it at the time.
We'll need to talk.
D R Horton's our first point to contact.
Yeah.
Not the homeowner.
We'll need to talk to you what we want to do with the big slope storms who were, if you want special. Mowing requirements or not, just to.
Doesn't matter to me.
Prevent soil erosion, but.
If it's a little long out here, it doesn't have to be this long. Grass. You know, so is in the. The weeds out of it.
We can say that for our city too, because we have weeds right next to my property that are. Need to be taken care of.
Sorry I brought that up.
We're supposed to be doing that this week.
Okay, anything else for Matt? What's up? Pretty busy? Now where we're gonna put some pickleball courts someday.
I guess that's question a lot.
I know. Um, Dave.
Good things that Dave, uh, Meadows, Part Five. The new plans and stormwater talks for that meeting with Axum tomorrow to go over the comments on it. Make a few revisions to the stormwater, you know, to meet our requirements. Waste floor plants, they have a pretty big hole dug out from the first area, the boon cell. And, uh, looking to try to get that executed by the end of the month. Hopefully working on area equipment, uh, in August, try to have that operation September, so shift. Over to taking one of the existing cells offline and start working on that. So, uh, currently they're moving pretty good. Lot of equipment out there. And, uh. Construction. Assuming we're doing well. Uh, permanent roundabout. Utility coordination meeting last week, had public communications and, uh, land and gas line. We have plans in place for them to be able to work around the project. Working on coordinating the county plans. They go first movement, we have two of the utilities that we're starting to coordinate with. Media com. A little bit more difficult.
Can I say that out loud?
Should hopefully be, uh, as much of a.
Yeah. Maybe laying on top of the ground.
They need with, um, potential developer of Part Three A, which is that. Discussion utilities and also have to take a look at, uh, future Peter Johnson road improvements, so we'll deal relocation at corner now. So all of that was discussed. Uh, the creek widening project, uh, they're supposed to begin on Wednesday to do the wetland delineation. Send the, uh, current hegras model over, they have the channel improvements that they've been working to get integrated with that. And, you know, I'm even wanting to up here, uh, closing month, try to make sure it looks good. The projects mesh together as well, so. Uh, also been working with, uh, the gas bills. And we're gonna try to come to an agreement, trying to send them, uh, the appraisal report that has, uh, including like a full night property. So we'll see how that goes, just more with the council. We still discussing that. Something to consider, which might be interested. Start that negotiation, see if that might be.
How the final plans going on around about?
Final plans on the roundabout, the county just provided their comments this morning. Percent over, percent over, so we have a side group, they're trying to set up this week, go over those and, uh. Moving forward. Utility coordination is a big part of it. Should have all these. Hopefully it's our property owners, uh, easements, uh, especially on the county's side. Started that discussion, see if it's, do the school yet. Yeah. See about the first big in ours.
Yeah. Good luck in still September for that?
That's what they have, uh, scheduled so far, uh, depending upon right of it, right when negotiations. Their, their thought is. Just because of the process of the divided September.
It's not.
Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mayor Council, I guess I don't have anything to talk about. Have one thing, yes. More or less. Right, committee can look at. I received a couple complaints slash comments of. Lack of seating at Woxie.
Oh, yeah.
One of them being my mother, so if you have any issues. But she was down watching my son and they took her to the park and she didn't have anywhere to sit, so.
Ben's too.
Yeah.
We have a bench that's ready.
Okay. I just wanted to bring it up, personally because she said something, so I figured I better. Cover, cover. Yeah. That was it, that was all I had.
Seen any more vandalism at Brownacre?
Um, not too many big issues. A little bit in the bathroom, soap or something like that, but nothing. Parks have been pretty busy, so the busier they are, the more likely. People are gonna be around to see something happening.
Okay, I don't have anything else, anybody? Otherwise I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Take a second. All of the favor say aye.